Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome the members of council, staff, and members of the public to our September 12th council meeting and call this meeting to order. At this time, I'd like to call upon Mrs. Pearson, Clerk Operations Clerk for the disclaimer, please.
Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. This time, I'd like to call on Mrs. Pearson again for the roll call, please.
Present.
Present.
Counselor O'Hara. Counselor Purdy.
Present.
Counsel- Counselor-
Present. At this time, I'd like to request that council declare a conflict of interest, either now or at the appropriate time on the agenda, and to fill out the necessary paperwork for the clerk. Seeing none, I'll continue. I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt the agenda before you tonight. I'll need a move in a second, or a move by Counselor Dighton, seconded by Counselor Field. Any discussion regarding the adoption of the agenda tonight? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. And moving on, consideration of our minutes of a regular council meeting held on July the 11th, I'd like to ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Move by Counselor O'Hara, seconded by Counselor Purdy. Any discussion regarding those minutes? Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those minutes? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll bring us tonight to the inspirational message. A little different tonight. What we're going to do is I'm, first of all, I've got a few things I want to say, but I'd like to ask everyone to please stand for a moment of silence in reflection and recognition of the passing of her, sorry, her Royal Highness, Queen Elizabeth II, please. Thank you. Please be seated. You probably have already noticed, but the flags are being flown at half-mast as a sign of the morning. The position of a flag shall be flown halfway below the top of its staff as a mark of respect for the person who has died. All Canadian flags that are displayed on flag poles or with pewl yards with the ability to raise and lower flag, excluding the flag pole atop of Victoria Hall as its capabilities are limited, will be flown at half-mast. And again, the half-mast will remain as per statement of the federal government's instructions. Thank you. That'll bring us to the council roundtable. And as you know, we rotate tonight. We'll start with Counselor Purdy, please.
Thank you, Worship. I did attend in your absence the grand opening of Domino's, which was well-attended. They're very good community people. It looks like, you know, they're gonna do a lot of good for our community as well. And, you know, I appreciate the fact that you, you know, we were at your brother's memorial in the East Coast and weren't able to attend, so I was happy to attend on your behalf.
Thank you, Counselor Purdy. I'm gonna mention that later as well. I did go see the owner later that week, and I welcomed him to town as well as the staff. Is there anything else, Counselor Purdy? Okay, we'll move on to Counselor Field.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Counselor Dighton.
Nothing at this time, Your Worship.
Thank you. Counselor O'Hara.
Yes, I also attended the Domino's just for interest sake, and it was, there was a lot of turnout there. I attended the, uh, the service, or I guess it was a celebration of life for Gary Ingram on your behalf. And, uh, I was at the, I went to the Lions Lobster Fest. It was a great success and a good meal. And I guess that's about what I've been doing.
Thank you, Counselor O'Hara. I'll speak to that as well later, and yes, I appreciate you filling in for me for his, that, for Mr. Gary Ingram's celebration of life. All right, Counselor Sutch.
I was at the 100th anniversary of the Lampington County Plowing Match. I didn't think I would have to go first, but I had the honor to go first and plow. And it was quite a, quite an experience, but I got it through. I know one mayor had a runaway tractor, so I guess I didn't do too bad.
And I, I saw your picture in the paper. It was a great picture, Counselor Sutch. And again, I'll speak to that in my report as well, but thank you for that. All right, I have a few items, because it seems like it's been a while since we've met. I attended an event with the IODE members making individual presentations with a certificate to the SORTC group for being recognized by the June Calwood Outstanding Achievement Award at the Fire Hall on Tuesday, July 19. I also congratulated and thanked the SORTC group for their involvement in the community and surrounding area, and thanked the IODE for making the presentation. I'd also like to thank Chief Arms for arranging this event. Thank you, Chief. I attended the Heritage Designation Open House and brought greetings and congratulations on behalf of the Council of the Town of Petroleum for Susan and Jeff McEwen at 4233 Emma Street, and Larissa and Ross Ellsworth at 425 Chestnut Street on Sunday, July the 24th. Special thanks to Terry Sire, who made the presentation, and congratulations on behalf of the Heritage Committee and Mandy Pearson, Clerk Operations Clerk, for her involvement. Counselor Joel Field, Counselor's representative on the Heritage Committee, was also in attendance. They were both great events, and the tours of the houses were outstanding. I attended a meeting at Victoria Hall on behalf of the Honorable Helena Jassik, Minister responsible for the Federal Economic Development Agency for Southern Ontario, Peter Frakis Gatos, Member of Parliament for London North Centre, who announced an investment of over $1.5 million through the Canadian Community Revitalization Fund and Tourism Relief Fund for six Sarnia Lampington projects. For Petroleum, this announcement is in celebration of the Victoria Playhouse Petroleum's successful application to the Tourism Relief Fund for $116,825 to add digital screens in the auditorium and to extend the season by six weeks in 2022. This is also the announcement for the successful grant application to the Canadian Community Revitalization Fund for $699,000, the project YMCA project. That project will enhance the fitness and wellness hub for the area. And more details will follow tonight on the council agenda. I attended the Warden's Banquet on Thursday, August 11th at Warden Marriott Farm located at Shiloh Line. This event was well-attended and a good time by all. I attended the Association of Municipalities of Ontario on Sunday, August 14th to the 17th in Ottawa, and was asked to sit on the panel discussion for asset management and the role elected officials, along with Christine Robinson, Mayor of West Gray, and Mayor Cam Guthrie for the Mayor for the City of Guelph. They also released a new town video regarding asset management, and it was a great conference with a record turnout. I was also asked not to release the town video until after it was viewed at AMO. If you haven't had a chance to see it, please see it. It's great promotion, and it's a great video for the Town of Petroleum. Special thanks to Counselor Grant Purdy, as you mentioned earlier, for filling in for me at the grand opening Domino's Pizza on Saturday, August 13th. And as I said later that week, I did meet the owner and staff and welcomed them to the Town of Petroleum. I'd also like to thank, again, as Counselor O'Hara stated, for filling in for me for Mr. Gary Ingram's celebration of life on Sunday, August the 14th. Thank you for that. I'd like to acknowledge Counselor Sutch, O'Hara, Purdy, myself, Mr. Rick Charlebois, CAO Treasurer, Mr. Paul Martin, Mr. Tony Camiso from Intact Insurance, who sponsored the event to go towards the CEE golf tournament on Thursday, August the 18th to raise money for our local hospital. This was a great turnout and a fun time by all. And as mentioned earlier as well, Wendy and I, along with my granddaughter Kira, attended the Lions Club Lobster Fest on Saturday, August 20th at the Lions Hall. It was a great time with good food and a large turnout. I want to congratulate the Lions Club and all those involved with that event. It was a huge success. I attended the Lampington County Committee meeting on Thursday, August 18th, and I will continue to keep counsel informed. I'd also like to thank Counselor Sutch, the Acting Mayor, for attending on my behalf for the 100th anniversary for the plowing match on Saturday, Sept-September 3rd, as he stated. So, thank you for that. And it's with great pleasure that I'd like to recognize Mr. John Prins from Soft Service for his donation of the rubber base for the parents' parks playground equipment in Greenwood Park. And my understanding is he's donating the full amount, along with a number of other groups and organizations that donate to this group as well. This is the type of community involvement that makes the Town of Petroleum so special. I'd also like to remind all those running in the election to please watch council meetings over the last few months to have an understanding in how the meetings are run. They're all on our website. You can see all the meetings, and you can get an understanding of how things work. I'd also like to recognize Mr. Glenn and Joan LaPointe for the welcome sign coming into town on Tank Street located on its property. This was a donation at no cost to the town. I also attended the Paint Ontario Art Competition viewing on behalf of the Town of Petroleum at the Lampington Heritage Museum on Thursday, September the 1st. It was being held on the weekend for anyone interested in viewing the art. I attended the County Council Meeting on Wednesday, the full meeting, September the 7th. And again, as I stated before, I will keep counsel informed. I took part in the Petroleum and Skill and Fall Fair opening ceremonies on Friday, September 9th, along with other councillors, and the Dunk Tank on Saturday, September 10th. That was a good time by all. I want to congratulate the Fair Board, volunteers, and all those involved with the fair for a successful event. And I attended the County BBQ on Wednesday, September 7th, at the Lions Hall in Wyoming. And, and everyone at that time wished the present mayor over there, Lonnie Napper, the very best in his retirement. That's all I have. So, moving on, we'll move to number eight, Correspondence for Information. We have eight A to G. I'll ask for a motion to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Move by Counselor Dighton, seconded by Counselor Field. Any discussion or does council wish to pull anyone, any of those items out to be dealt with separately? If not, okay, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. For Correspondence, for considering motion, we do not have any. Delegations and presentations, we do, oh, sorry?
Petroleum Farmers Market.
All right. All right, I'll ask for a motion to put that on the floor for discussion. Move by Counselor Dighton, seconded by Counselor Purdy. And that is a request from Shop Like Charlotte. Now, did everyone receive that or see that then? Okay. Any further discussion regarding that? I will ask Mrs. Pearson, I forgot the last couple of times, to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petroleum to approve the organizers of Shop Like Charlotte to use the Petroleum Farmers Market for their event at no cost.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to the community announcements, recognitions, and awards. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Move by Counselor O'Hara, seconded by Counselor Purdy. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petroleum to receive as information only the September 12th, 2022, community announcements as presented.
Any discussions regarding that? If not, Mrs. Ellsworth, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Nothing at this time, Your Worship. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. This brings us for the first opportunity for the public to address council. And alas, is there anyone here that would like to address council at this time? Thank you for coming. I would like to mention for those present that the lawyer made it very clear, the integrity commissioner, that I am not to speak to anything regarding the final report. I can only speak to the recommendations, which I accepted. And the recommendations were, did not act maliciously, committed a blatant breach of trust or ethical standards or undermining of the reputation and professional integrity of someone who holds and respected the position with the town, no more than an inadvertent breach of warrants, nor formal reprimand or monetary penalty. The other thing I want to mention, the, the agreement with the counselor regarding closed session is completely separate, and that was something that was agreed upon, and that agreement is in place. So, that's a complete separate issue. And that's all I'll say about this. I think we should move on. Was there something else council wants to come bring forward? Counselor Field.
I think, as far as the council vote, voting, we voted on what we were given at that time. Um, I think I said that day that I wish we had have had the, the tape. I think the tape did tell a little different of the story. But I have, to my understanding, it was sent on to the integrity commissioner, or that he, they received it as well. But I think the vote that we did that night was regarding what we were handed that night. That, you know, that information that came out after, we didn't have for the vote. I just wanted to clarify that.
For those present, also at that same meeting, I declared a conflict of interest. I stepped down from the seat, did not take part in the discussion or vote on the motion. Is there anything else? And let's move on. I'd like to move on to the financial accounts and report. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Move by Counselor O'Hara, seconded by Counselor Dighton. Any discussion regarding those accounts? Counselor Field.
I just had one question, maybe Counselor O'Hara. Um, city of Sarnia Finance, $19,000. Just curious what we're paying the city for.
I'll ask Mr. Charlebois. Can you speak to that, please?
Certainly, Your Worship. Probably best to have Mr. Thompson speak to it, one of his department.
Any other discussions on the accounts? Counselor O'Hara, do you have anything you'd like to add? Okay. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petroleum to receive as information only, July 7th, 2022, through to August 15th, 2022, financial accounts as circulated.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. That moves us on to reports and on to finance. We have a motion before you regarding Mr. Rick Charlebois, CAO Treasurer, regarding the second quarterly financial report. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that motion on the floor for discussion, please. Move by Counselor Field, seconded by Counselor Dighton. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petroleum to receive and file, reported the CAO Treasurer dated the 12th of September, 2022, regarding the 2022 second quarter financial report known as QT, sorry, Q2.
Any discussion? Mr. Charlebois, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I'd just like to summarize the town operating, general operating, call it, that is doing well. That's non-water, non-sewer. The water and sewer, um, were behind in revenue, although there's a time lag of about two months. And as everybody knows, it was a pretty hot summer, so hopefully we'll catch up on the revenue side.
Thank you, Mr. Charlebois. Actually, that's, it's great news. The, uh, I think the town is looking in good financial shape at this time. Any other discussion? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in fa- oh, sorry.
Just gonna make a comment there. In, in reviewing this, I noticed that, uh, due to, uh, that your comment was due to impact statements, our, our revenue was actually up. So, we are receiving more money influx from the, to take some of that offset as well.
Mr. Charlebois, go ahead.
Sure. Good question, Counselor Dighton. So, the wastewater treatment plant, as Counselor remember, I think we finished it about a year and a half, two years ago. Um, but IMPACT does assessments on all properties, including her wastewater treatment plant. So, the value, I think it was a 50-year-old plant to a new one. The assessment went up, and so we pay, so for the waste, sewer rate pairs pay more money now, pay for the property taxes for that building, of which the town, as we said, we give up 60% of that. And goes to some of the education. Good point.
Thank you, Mr. Charlebois. Okay, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. Moving on to community services and facilities. We have a report from Mr. Dave Menzies, Director of Facilities and Community Services, regarding the YMCA Community Recreation Project. The YMCA Community Recreation Project is before you. I'll ask for a motion to put that on the floor for discussion. Move by Counselor Field, seconded by Counselor Dighton. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petroleum to endorse the report of the Director of Facilities and Community Services dated September 12th, 2022, regarding the YMCA Community Recreation Project, and that the council support the phased approach to the development.
I think council's probably seen this. I think it's great news for the town. It's gonna be really nice when we get this done. Um, Mr. Menzies, do you have anything you'd like to add? Thank you, Mr. Menzies. Counselor Dighton.
Just, uh, for everybody at home as well, what is the overall cost going to be of this? Uh, I realize that the phase one was, I think, 900 is what we saw in there. Um, do we have an overall, just so everybody knows?
Mr. Menzies, can you speak to that, please? Counselor Dayton.
Thank you very much, it does look lovely there, they're doing a good job on the, on the overall pictures, I really enjoyed the package itself. And I would appreciate that, I thank you for going forward with that.
I believe that the total cost on this phase is nine hundred and thirty-two thousand. Counselor Sutts, did you have your hand up? You okay? Mr. Charlebois, go ahead.
Yes, your worship, for phase two and on, like, we'll keep our eye out for any possible grants that might come our way.
Please do, but I want council to be aware of, and I want staff to continue doing that. All right, any other discussion regarding that motion? All those in favor of that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. That will move us on to administration, we have a report from Mr. Rick Charlebois, C A O Treasurer, regarding the municipal staffing. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Moved by Counselor Purdy, seconded by Counselor Sutts, I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
Thank you, our worship, and that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the C A O, dated the twelfth of September, two thousand twenty-two, regarding municipal staffing.
Any discussion from council? Counselor Purdy.
Thank you, worship, I just, I did pass along to council, since I was the one that originally put the, the motion forward, back in November of two thousand twenty, I basically mirrored the county of Lampton's nutrition management policy, which is threefold, and it is there for everybody to see, but I just, I just, so nothing's ambiguous. The report that we got seemed to delineate, like, the council's job versus the C A O's job, and that, that wasn't the intent of this. The intent of this was just to, as, as things become vacant, and because, you know, any government is just like any other private business, things are dynamic, and always constantly changing. This is, this more of a, an annual review, it's not a matter of trying to get into the hiring process or termination process. It, it's, it's just something that, you know, is, is part of good governance for us, and, and that was my intent on submitting this. Just to clear up any, any ambiguities.
Mr. Charlebois, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Sure, to you, worship, yeah, I appreciate that, Counsel Purdy, and as in, per my note, my intent is for the budget twenty twenty-three, I'll bring in a little summary of what's gone on previous year, like the county does, but I'll make it part of the budget process, at all, there at the same time. Thank you.
Any other further discussion from council? Seeing none, I'll call the vote, oh, sorry, Counselor Sutts. Mr. Charlebois, just like to answer that, please.
Through you, worship, yes, so as council's fully aware, we had the deputy clerk moved on to the county actually. So she was replaced internally, and also one person for public works. Person retired from the union, staff that internally, and then back to the.
Looking at that motion, I see it was Counselor Purdy and Counselor Dayton. Counselor Purdy moved it, and was seconded by Counselor Dayton. Gentlemen want to speak to that or not?
Worship, if you don't mind, Grant, I actually, I did second that, and the intent was, basically what we're seeing on that page from the, from the C A O's office of the county of Lampton. And that is to be able to assess, you know, department sizes, department expenditures, the amount of people that we have. So that we can go back through that and understand, okay, do we have the right amounts? And it's, as, granted, it's stated, or Counselor Purdy had stated, it's a dynamic nature of any business, and we're always gonna have movement back and forth. It gives council a little more accountability into what's actually happening out there. Again, we're not asking to get into the process of hiring who they are. We just want to know more of what's going on, when they're coming back and forth. So that was the intent from my standpoint, is that we would like to, to, to see the report, say, okay, we've had somebody leave, we need, or had somebody retire, we need to refill this, and we have a discussion about it and move on, I mean, it's, that was my intent.
Thank you, same, the same, okay? All right, Counselor Sutts. Counselor Field.
The resolution on the table is to receive and file this report. I, I don't know, and I don't see where it says that we're not gonna hire anybody. Adopt an, our nutrition management plan, direct the C A O and its delegates to develop and manage the process? I mean, we're telling them to manage the process, and bring it forward to council for approval. I thought that was nutrition plan, is that not what the next statement said? So they brought it to us, we approved it, I'm not sure where it says, don't hire anybody, I just didn't see that. A, B, C, or D?
Thank you, Counselor Field, Counselor, or sorry, Mr. Charlebois, go ahead.
Yeah, through you, worship, I did speak with both the C A O of the county and the deputy C A O, actually two separate times, and to see what the intent of this and how they were doing it, like, they're doing it retrospectively, like, that, so here's February's. So just summarizing what's happened, and that's exactly what I proposed when I reported to council. When budget twenty twenty-three happens, part of that, and you see it all together, as Counselor Sutts and Counselor Dayton were talking about, it's much better, I think, to see it all together in one spot, as part of the budget.
Counselor Field.
And, this is good, it's very interesting, that this information from the county, but I believe all of this was at their budget time, too? From their budget meetings?
That's correct. All right, anything else? If not, I'll call the vote, all those in favor of the motion before you. Opposed, that motion carries. Okay, that'll bring us to a report from Mrs. Mandy Pearson, Clerk Operations Clerk, regarding the lap follow-up from council motion of July two thousand twenty-two. There is a motion before you, I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Moved by Counselor Dayton, seconded by Counselor Sutts, I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
Your worship, with your permission, before reading the motion, can I provide a small update that we received at the very end of today?
Certainly, go ahead.
So I may actually refer to Counselor, now you have me doing it, to Mr. Charlebois, as he is going to investigate a little further. We did receive a response from Mr. Barry, the response was not related to the request of an allocation to where the funds and that motion that council had approved about unused funds returning to the Parks Recreation Program. It outlined a history of meetings that had been had between our Director of Facilities and Community Services and the C A O. So I understood, at the end of the day, Rick and I had a brief moment, he's going to follow up, so we did have a response, but it wasn't responding to the inquiry asked of council.
And I can add too, Mrs. Mueller did call me, that Matt was in a serious car accident, and that, we'd like a little more time to sort this out. And I said that would be no problem, but I'll ask the clerk to read that motion before us, please.
Thank you, worship, and that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the Clerk Operations Clerk, dated September twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, regarding follow-up and update to council's request regarding the funding raised by Mr. Matt Mueller for the Lampton Active People Plan.
Any further discussion regarding that motion before you? If not, all those in favor of approving that motion, opposed, that motion carries. We have a report from Mrs. Mandy Pearson, Clerk Operations Clerk, and Mrs. Jessica Smith, Deputy Clerk, regarding the indigenous land acknowledgement approval, indigenous land management approval. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor for discussion, moved by Counsel Field, seconded by Counsel O'Hara. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to adopt the report of the Clerk Operations Clerk, and the Deputy Clerk, dated September twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, regarding indigenous land acknowledgement, and that council adopt the indigenous land acknowledgement statement for the town of Petrolia.
Thank you, and again, I'll ask Mrs. Pearson or Mrs. Smith, do you have anything you'd like to add to that? Okay?
I, no, your worship, other than, it was wonderful, a very interactive process, I believe, with Mr. Plain, which was nice to see on both sides.
Thank you, all right, I'll call the vote, all those in favor of approving that motion, opposed, that motion carries. We have a report from Jessica Smith, Deputy Clerk, regarding business license and sign permit issued in September of two thousand twenty-two. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Moved by Counsel Sutts, seconded by Counselor Dayton, I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the Deputy Clerk Executive Assistance Report, dated September twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, regarding business and signage permits issued to date.
Any discussion? There's quite a number. Mrs. Smith, anything you'd like to add? Thank you. I'll call the vote, all those in favor of approving that motion, opposed, that motion carries, thank you. Moving on, we have a report from Larissa Ellsworth, Director of Market Arts and Communication, regarding the downtown updates and information called SLAP. And I'll ask for a move and a second to put that motion on the floor for discussion, please. Moved by Counsel Sutts, seconded by Counsel Dayton, I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the Director of Marketing Arts and Communication, dated Monday, September twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, regarding downtown updates and information.
Any questions from council? Counselor Sutts, or sorry, Counselor Field.
Thank you, worship, this is, it's great that we're getting this survey information, just really encourage residents to go and fill it out. It looks like it's gonna be at the community center for a couple of opportunities. There's, has been several meetings at the library about this as well, over the past while, with. So this is great, that she's joining us.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Mrs. Ellsworth, would you like to add anything?
Just fill out those surveys, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call the vote, all those in favor, opposed, that motion carries, thank you. Moving on, we have a report from Mrs. Larissa Ellsworth, Director of Marketing Arts and Communication, regarding the Victoria Playhouse ticket sales, and I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Moved by Counsel Field, seconded by Counsel Dayton, I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the Director of Marketing Arts and Communications, dated September twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, regarding the Victoria Playhouse Petrolia Ticket Sales Report.
Before I open it up to council, I just want to say, congratulations, that's great news for the town. To be at something like ninety-four percent of the ticket sales is great news. So the theater is doing really, really well, and the show starting tomorrow night should really bring us back up our, over our expected revenue. Any discussion from council? Again, Larissa, to you and your staff, congratulations, well done. All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. We have nothing regarding our closed session in camera, this will bring us to the second opportunity for the public to address council. Anyone wishing to address council? I can explain why at that time, sure. Yep. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address council? Okay, we'll move on to new and unfinished business. We do have a notice of motion from Counselor Don Welton, that was deferred from June the twenty-seventh and July eleventh. And I guess I'll open it up for discussion for council, or if there's a motion to come forward.
I'll move that we bring that forward.
I need a second, thank you, Counsel Field, need a second to bring this forward at this time? No second, and this, I believe this is the last time, so this will die, is that correct?
That, that's really a shame.
Thank you, well, I think there's, just for those present, I think there was a motion already going to the new council to deal with that issue as well, so.
Which defers it an extra year. If we had did this tonight, the new council for next year's budget would be able to consider this, one way or the other. It takes one year, as we were told in our sessions.
I think council can certainly make a, just, the new council could make a decision in November and have it started right away. So, anyway, there's no second, or there's, we don't go any further, we'll go on to the next. There's a request from myself in relation to the amendment to the council meetings. I think the intention is a couple of things, one is, felt that we did not want to get into committing the new council. The other is, it also gives the town staff time to prepare for the election. And again, so you're aware, any emergency meeting can be called by me at any time, so if there's anything that needs to be dealt with, it can be called by myself to be dealt with. But I'll ask for a move in a second, or if, if council wishes to proceed with this. I'll need a move in a second, move by Counsel Dayton, seconded by Counsel O'Hara.
Certainly, your worship, and whereas the council of the corporation of the town of Petrolia has adopted a procedure bylaw that speaks to the scheduling of council meetings, and whereas section three point two one A allows for scheduled meetings of council to be amended through motion of council, and whereas in consideration of the upcoming two thousand twenty-two municipal election, and ability for a meeting to take place at the call of the chair, therefore be it resolved, that the council of the corporation of the town of Petrolia amend the two thousand twenty-two council meeting schedule to remove the September twenty-sixth and October eleventh, two thousand twenty-two council meetings.
Thank you, certainly you can, so there'll be a recorded vote? Any other discussion from council while we're preparing for a recorded vote? Okay, I'll just turn it over to you then, Mrs. Pearson.
Thank you, worship, and just as a reminder, the mover of the recorded vote will go, I'm sorry. Yes, the, the mover will go second last, the mayor will go last, and everybody else is in alphabetical order. And it is for or against, please, when asked. And that was moved by Counsel Dayton, so we, we skip him in alphabetical order, Counselor Field, for or against?
Against.
Counselor O'Hara, for or, thank you, Counselor Purdy?
For.
Counselor Sutts? Counselor Welton is absent, Counselor Dayton?
For.
And your worship?
I'm in favor.
That carries, your worship, five to one.
Thank you. That'll move us on to our bylaws, I'll ask for a move and a second for the first and second reading, please. Moved by Counsel O'Hara, seconded by Counsel Purdy, any discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries, and I'll ask for a motion to have the bylaws read a third time, finally passed, signed, sealed, and numbered. Moved by Counsel Dayton, seconded by Counsel Sutts, and I'll ask the clerk to read those bylaws, please.
Thank you, worship, that is for bylaw number thirty-eight of two thousand twenty-two, being a bylaw of the corporation of the town of Petrolia, respecting. the Corporation of the Town of Petrolia respecting highways, streets in the Town of Petrolia, be read a third time and finally passed. That bylaw number thirty-nine of two thousand twenty-two, being a bylaw of the Corporation of the Town of Petrolia, to confirm the resolutions and motions of the Council of the Town of Petrolia, which were adopted up to and including September twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, be read a third time and finally passed.
Any discussion regarding those bylaws? All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. And I'll ask for a motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Counsel Dyson, seconded by Counsel Purdy. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
Thank you, worship. And that is for the September twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, meeting of the Council of the Town of Petrolia to be adjourned to the next regular scheduled meeting of council to be held on Monday, November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, or at call of the chair.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. Thank you.